Good evening. I'm noting the time and presence of a quorum, I now call the act in Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Welcome, everyone. We're going to move right to item three, which is public participation. This is a time during our meeting when members of the public are invited to speak on items not on the agenda.
Thank you, everybody, for letting me speak. I'm Tara Fryderk, so I'm from West Acton. And so, I'm here to talk about land use because the land use decisions in the town are made by, well, they're made by town meeting, but largely the day-to-day, what's proposed, the changes that are happening and permitted, designed for, in Acton, are made by Town Hall. And so, I'm hoping that, and this relates to road capacity, road policies, road design, and I'm sorry that I'm speaking about this under the circumstances where somebody was hit, because I've been talking about this for a long time, but I'm sorry. But I feel like it's time for the school committee to have a land use subcommittee, where we would, as a group, the public, talk about how land use, things that are happening, how it affects kids. And so, I hope that you all consider doing that. I know that there's a pedestrian safety committee that has formed, and I have not heard about whether that's official, whether it's open to the public, or whether it's been, how often things happen, people handpicked for the committee based on how they feel already. I hope that these folks are not handpicked to encourage speed. There is a big debate in town right now about whether we want our roads to be fast to accommodate profit and corporations and state mandated economic growth, or whether we want our roads to be slow and to be about people over profit and people first. So, I encourage you to, whatever you do, to look into these issues, peel the onion back and see whether or not speed is the first issue or not. A lot of people are promoting lights, more stoplights, more signs, and in progressive planning circles, they're showing that the more signs, the more painting, the more of that you have, the faster the traffic goes. And that's because when, unconsciously, when a driver sees all of the painting, they feel like they're on a racetrack, that they now can go fast because the community recognizes that this is a highway, or they wouldn't be putting all these signs in. There are pilots, very successful pilots, in Europe where they're taking out all the signs in the intersection and letting people figure it out, and the accident rate has plummeted in these areas. So, please, consider this. And so, there's, the idea of land use goes beyond just how a road is configured, it goes relative to how much building there is, because currently, there's no what's called cumulative planning in Acton Town Hall relative to land use. So, cumulative planning is about keeping track of how much capacity of fixed assets you have, like water, or debt, or road capacity. And so, if you know that the road capacity is a certain number of cars a day, and you're permitting developments, 100, you know, units here, 100 units there, right now, there's almost 400 new housing units in the pipeline in Acton. And each of the projects, when you get the traffic report back from the consultant, it says there's no impact. So, if there's no impact on this project, no impact on that, no impact, if you've lived around here for as long as I have, you know there's a lot of impact. And so, a land use subcommittee-
Tara, I'm going to ask you to-
I'm almost done.
Conclude.
I was just going to say that a land use subcommittee could peel back that onion and figure out whether there is an impact over time, and maybe promote the idea of cumulative planning to figure out, every time we permit something, how much does that reduce of our overall capacity? Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Hello. I am Dr. Lee Abraham. I'm a parent here because my daughter Kendra was lost on the first day of coming home from school. She was supposed to be home at 3:45 according to the published list from the district. At 4:05, I got worried and called the school. I was told the bus was already on Drummer Road, which is 10 stops past my street. I didn't know if she wasn't on the bus, she was on the wrong bus where she was. I called the school, I emailed the school, I emailed the Transportation Department. It was 16 minutes later, full hour after she was supposed to be home, that she arrived. And they were just contacting the bus driver then, and the bus driver was asking where the kindergarten was, because they couldn't translate Kendra. So, I, the next morning, gave the route printed out, and with my daughter's stop highlighted, to the bus driver. The bus driver forgot Conan on the way home, so Kendra got home where she was supposed to be. Wednesday, it was again, she was 30 minutes past the stated time, and an hour passed when she was dismissed when she got home. And it wasn't until Friday, when Dr. Light was able to tell me that they were running the bus route in reverse of what it's published. It is still published that my daughter is coming home at 3:45, stop number five. I made my plans based on the letter that came home on the 31st saying, "Take a final look for the schedules." I have things she needs to be at at 4:00, she's supposed to be home at 3:45. I have contacted Dr. Light, and my last communication with him was it was under review as of Tuesday last week, and he was going to get back to me sometime later in the week. I'd like to ask the school committee, what's going on with transportation? Why is the published schedule not being followed? And why are children getting home a full hour after they're dismissed? And why is my daughter going to have her schedule changed according to the head of Transportation, J.D. Light, such that she's getting home 25 minutes to 28 minutes, I took photos of when the bus is actually showing up, after her published time?
Thank you for sharing that. Okay, we have some warrants to sign this evening. There are three warrants on the agenda which are being circulated now for your signature. Vendor warrant 19-006 PR and 19-006, in the amount of $1,423,049.26. And a payroll warrant P-1906, in the amount of $2,341,625.55. So, please, don't forget to sign that and pass it on. Your packet contains the minutes from our September 6 meeting. You've had a chance to look these over. There is one change that I know about before I ask for a motion, which is on page two, it's the third bullet down, and it's just a date change. Oh, it's page four, I'm sorry, page four, bullet three. And the date is supposed to be October 18th on that line, and it was printed as the 19th, it's written as the 19th of October. So, Beth, you've noted that change, yes? Okay. So, I'm now looking for a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion, further changes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Oh, I'm sorry, Michael abstains. Motion passes. Okay, we're moving to item five, student representative update. So, in line with our policy JIB, which states that students will be welcome at committee meetings and granted privileges of speaking in line with the privileges extended to the general public, it also says the committee will consider student opinions in establishing policies that directly affect student programs, activities, privileges, and other areas of student sensitivity. We have invited Michael Chang, who is one of three school committee reps from the high school, to bring us some real-time knowledge of school issues to help us connect to the everyday goings-on and experiences of students at the high school. Michael has graciously agreed to speak to us tonight. Thank you so much, Michael, for coming.
Thank you for having me, it's a pleasure. My name's Michael Chang, I'm a junior. Some of you might have seen me, I inhabit a lot of Thursday nights sort of behind that pole over there. But yeah, I'm one of three school student representatives of the school committee. You'll be meeting Arnab in a few weeks, and Betty, I think Diane's met, but I don't think the rest of your committee has a chance to meet. She's great, you'll meet her soon. Just to get a sense, going forward, this segment might have more of a theme or a topic central, like each particular meeting, this is just the start of school, we're getting settled in, this is the first time, and this might be a little more scare shot than usual, but just anyways. One, I think we've talked a lot about it in this area, scheduling, start times, the logistical challenges, which are certainly real and stuff. I just wanted to point out that we're still, while we're still getting settled in and remembering when fifth period and sixth period begins, remembering what to do with that half an hour in the morning, I think it's really generally had a very positive impact on students so far. I was at a school council meeting, I think, just an hour ago, where statements were made really strongly to that effect. Students said they had more time to plan around, they're a little less stressed, some reported being to have breakfast. So, that's just something that's great, keep that in mind, that wellness was one of our focuses going into that. There was a, there were, as a religious holiday, and as a result, homework-free days and weekends on Wednesday of this week and Friday of two weeks ago. I'd say that going into this policy, that teachers and students have been more aware of implementing the spirit of that policy, and we've really seen it's getting better to that effect. And just some quick things I'll note, fall sports are underway, just sort of a shout-out to the 400-some-odd students that are participating in those sports, and 600-some-odd, if you include the junior high. And I don't want to really single out any particular teams this early in the season, but I will say if you want information, the internet is a great place for that. And also, on other extracurriculars, the Counseling Department graciously held a student activities fair last week, Thursday and Friday, and those activities more or less are getting started this week, next week, and those are going to get underway. Thank you.
So, I don't have a very long update for you, but I just wanted to highlight a few things going on. So, as you're aware, I came to you August 23rd and shared my entry plan with you, and I just wanted to give you a quick update around that. So, the most exciting piece of that entry plan is actually the school visit schedule I have, and so, to date, I've been able to schedule three of the formal visits with our principals. And the visit typically entails me meeting with the principal for about 30 to 45 minutes before, and then we visit a series of classrooms throughout the school, meet some students, get to talk with kids in classes, learning. It's really just a nice opportunity to see what's going on. It also informs my entry into the district to take a look at trends and patterns in teaching and learning across all of the schools. I've had an opportunity to visit the high school, the junior high school, and also Blanchard to date, so that's been very exciting, and I have more schools coming each month. I'm visiting one school, excuse me, I'm visiting each school every month of the year between now and June, so that gives me an opportunity to really get to know people. The second piece of that is I'm in the process of scheduling our student forums, our family forums, and also our faculty forums. Just again, to highlight for you, I'm scheduling a student forum at every school in the district, so I get an opportunity to hear from students, what their experiences are like, what they think the opportunities are ahead of the district, what they think is best about AB. I'm doing something similar for our faculty, as well as our families at each school. So, that's on the horizon, and those are currently on the schedule. I'm also working, I see our CPAC representative in the back, I'm working with CPAC right now to try and come up with a date that we can all make, and that's proving to be a challenge, but that's something that's in the works. So, quick update on the entry plan. Capital planning update, we are forming a new capital subcommittee, in that I think Diane sent out a memo to you regarding that. I just wanted to highlight a few things for you and also the public. We have several goals that we're hoping to accomplish through that capital planning subcommittee. We want to review and confirm the scope of the work that Bill McCalliffe presented to you last spring. We also want to review the scope of the work of what was not included. We know that there was a gap between what was included in the five-year plan and the total dollar amount that was needed to really bring all of our buildings into, you know, the condition we feel that they need to be in, so we want to be clear about what is being included and not being included in that plan. We also want to talk about having a system in place for monitoring our progress and implementing that plan, and then we also want to determine what the appropriate funding sources for that plan and how we can complete all of this work. So, the subcommittee is going to consist of district administrators. It's also going to include school committee members, and you have that memo in your packet, or actually Diane sent it previously to you regarding opportunities for you. And then, we're also inviting a member from each finance committee in both communities, so that we can make sure that we're collaborating with the town in developing a coordinated capital program. The last piece I'm very, very excited about, I have received an estimate from SCANSCA, and we are going to be signing off on that tomorrow to move that forward. We're going to use SCANSCA as a consultant to the capital planning process, so that we can lend a professional lens to it. We know that the cost estimating that was originally completed by Doran Whittier was not always accurate, and so, what we want to do is bring in professionals, and the benefit of SCANSCA is that they have professional cost estimators on staff and can make sure that when we put a five-year capital plan together, A, it's executable, it's packaged appropriately to be able to receive competitive bids, it can also make sure the cost estimates included are accurate. And then, the final component of that that we are looking to do, because we know that we're going to have several million dollars of capital programs going in over the next few years, we'd like to have SCANSCA help us develop some kind of a request for proposals to help manage that process, because we know that, you know, with one head of operations, which includes transportation, as well as facilities, we need a lot of support, because that head of operations is also going to be intimately involved in our building project over the next few years as well. So, I think it's going to be a really critical element to make sure, not only are we planning this appropriately, but also managing it through the process and making sure work is completed on schedule and under budget. So, I'm excited to be able to update you with regard to that. And then, the final one, it's not such a fun update, our Leary Field lighting project is behind schedule. I think you probably have heard that throughout the community. It's not a position any of us wanted to be in. Originally, it was delayed through some permitting issues, but that has since turned into just some slow work, we think, that's getting done. J.D. has been communicating with the contractor regarding that regularly. We anticipated, at the time of this memo, we had confirmation from the contractor, work would be done on the 20th, and if you go out there today, we're still missing several lights. So, we anticipate that it will be done next week at this time, but if it's not, we will be looking at bringing in portable lights and things like that, because I think, you know, it's not just our football program, but our music program as well, who relies on that field, and then a whole variety of community organizations also rely on the availability of that space. So, J.D. and I are in communication, we're working with the contractor to try and have that done as soon as possible, but I wanted to make sure that you understood, we knew it was behind schedule, and we're trying to work through that. So, thank you very much.
Paul?
Thank you, Peter. On the, so, I appreciate the creation of the capital planning subcommittee, and I like that we're asking finance committee members to participate. I think that, I know Jason has been asking about that, and I think that it just makes sense to have that kind of advisory capability on that board, so, thank you. From Leary Field, isn't the band anniversary coming up? But that's not evening, though, is it? Saturday afternoon, right, okay, yeah, okay.
The game is at 1 o'clock PM, and they're playing the halftime show.
It's the 60th anniversary of the band, so if anybody can go, it's going to be a great celebration.
Mary?
I also want to echo the plans for the capital planning, and how comprehensive, pulling in that other piece of information that we had gotten from Doran Whittier but wasn't in the five-year plan, just helps, I think, understand the whole picture and helps the community's plan, so I'm really, really thrilled with all that. Thank you.
Okay, item seven on the agenda, we have a presentation this evening by the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I'm trying to kind of root the presentations and what we do in policy and law, so that you kind of have an understanding of like why we have these presentations. So, I'm just going to welcome Amanda Bailey and Carrie Weaver, who are the co-chairs of AB CPAC. And like the relevant laws are, Mass. General Law 71B, Section C, and the Code of Massachusetts Regulations as well, requires all public schools districts to establish a parent advisory council on special education. And AB, we typically invite our Special Education Parent Advisory Council to present to us in the fall, and again, in the spring. It is my pleasure to welcome Amanda and Carrie here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. As Diane said, my name is Amanda Bailey, I'm with Carrie Weaver, I co-chair the Acton Boxborough Special Education Parent Advisory Council, the ABCPAC. We're working on that one. This will be my fifth year in this role, and Carrie's first. We're here tonight to discuss the CPAC's goals and priorities, as Diane said, for the coming year. Of these goals and priorities, we're going to highlight four tonight. The others represent rolling items, the MCAS analysis, website changes, handbook updates. Our first priority this year is to improve CPAC outreach, with an emphasis on increasing engagement with and participation from culturally diverse families. This graphic expands outward toward the community, so it doesn't accurately reflect the whole task before us, finding where we can draw people into decision-making. We have additional considerations to navigate, other parent organizations don't. Students ranging in age from 3 to 22, diversity of disability, cultural understandings of disability, caregiver needs, and stigma. We need to continue to increase our visibility, so parents know we're here as a resource. We're attending the back-to-school nights again this year, prioritizing community events, creating opportunities for dialogue at the school level through the joint PTO sessions, and working with surrounding CPACs to cosponsor workshops and pool knowledge. New ways to meet families' needs are already emerging from these conversations. Sharing information about a program like Wings Over Autism, where families can practice going through security at the airport and boarding a plane, is really important to our families from overseas. I hadn't considered that before sitting down with the group of moms from India last week. Ultimately, we're not going to see increased participation and engagement until we reestablish family social events on a routine basis. We're working with our 501(c)(3) to do so. Another priority, and one of our key methods to date for understanding families' experiences, is to do surveys. DESI wants CPACs to survey annually. Beyond that, we have a number of reasons to do so at this moment, including new programs, expansions, and initiatives from early childhood through the high school. We have a lot of new staff with these programs, and retirements, and the adding of building-based team chairs at the elementary schools. At Miriam, for instance, we have a new-to-the-roll principal, a new assistant principal, a new special education team leader, a new special educator in the K-3 Resource Room, and some very nervous parents as a result of all this. There's additionally been a district-wide drawing down of the number of special education assistants. We had far above the level of our peer districts when it came to special education assistance. We've been bringing that down in favor of adding certified staff. Another reason to survey parents now is increased use of technology in the IEP process and communication. We now receive IEP progress reports for accepted IEPs through the parent portal, and there have been issues reported with this, including confusion over partially accepted documents, progress reports disappearing during maintenance and then not reappearing. There's also increased pre-drafting of IEPs prior to team meetings. How is that looking when families go to sit at the table? Are their voices being heard? Finally, we need to follow up on our surveys from 2015 and 2017 to examine issues over time, like improving communication, an extended school year eligibility and programming, and following subgroups like families of children with specific learning disabilities. Of all this, why focus especially on specific learning disabilities, especially dyslexia? In 2017, a number of open-ended survey responses touched on dyslexia. With the anticipated language learning program developed at the element, to be developed at the elementary level, we need to further establish what families' experiences have been to date, particularly around early identification, methods of remediation, and intensity. We intend to use our survey data, feedback from a focus group or listening sessions, and research to guide our recommendations. When we think about the cost of late identification and remediation, what does this mean for students? There's a misconception floating around that children with IEPs don't work as hard as others or high achievers. Having a disability doesn't preclude a child from achieving if properly supported, and our kids work harder than anyone. While disability simulations can be problematic, if you have five minutes, I encourage you to go to understood.org and try out the learning and attention issue simulations. You can do so by age and disability type. They're timed, so you get a sense of the pressure component, and maybe a small sense of why kids with specific learning issues are at increased risk for social and emotional difficulties as well. Finally, parent education is one of our most important roles. We're hosting basic rights this year in conjunction with surrounding CPACs in their districts. A partnership with Concord, Concord-Harlem, will allow us to cosponsor another workshop on communication, or the IEP, given our Mass PAC membership status. Our thanks to Student Services for continuing to sponsor our membership level. While we are hosting basic rights in English, we want to note the Federation for Children with Special Needs is continuing to produce webinars on basic rights and other topics in a number of languages. They are also offering the Intensive Parent Consultant Training Institute in Spanish this year. This is the training most advocates undergo. We're also looking at bullying prevention as an often ignored piece of mental health and wellness. Our students are at increased risk for being bullied, and some are at risk of being bullied themselves. This is why bullying is part of the discussion when developing an IEP, and why we're having mass advocates for children come present a workshop on this topic. Beyond these priorities, you may recall, we talked a lot about accessibility issues and inclusion practices last year. We've added an item under open issues on our business meeting agendas, so we continue these conversations. There's opportunity here with a number of district-wide, general education-based initiatives. As we build capacity in classrooms for diverse learning profiles, we also need to ensure we're protecting students' rights under IDEA, to have their needs documented, and specialized instruction as required. Thank you for your time, and we will take any questions you may have.
Tessa?
I don't have a question. I was just going to say thank you, because I know this makes you really nervous, but I also wanted to thank you for pointing out understood.org, because I think that, as a parent of children that, you know, experienced things different from how I learn, it's a really awesome website, especially the simulations. I think it can give a really accurate portrayal of what it means to feel stressed because you don't know what to do. And I think that that's hard to get across if you don't have learning issues, and however they came up with doing it is excellent, so I think it's a good resource for anybody.
It's also a good resource with accommodations and ideas, it's really a phenomenal site. Thank you.
Item eight is district goals, so.
All right, so I put together a little bit of a presentation here on some of the district goals, because I wanted to just give you a little background on how we got to where we're at. So, before you is a draft copy of the district goals for 2018-19 for your consideration. This is a first read of those goals, and what we'd like to do is present a little bit, and then have discussion, be able to listen to some feedback, answer questions, and then we will take that thought process back, make any revisions necessary, and come back to you during the next meeting for a second read, and hopefully a vote. So, one thing, hopefully, I did a good job highlighting, was that we have a long-range strategic plan, which was developed as a five-year plan, which, according to the documents on our website, was adopted by the school committee on October 3rd, 2017, all right? And that was a five-year plan. And that committed to a number of different things. One, it articulated a vision for the district, and because this is, you know, an annual presentation, I think it's appropriate to take the time and read that, but it's to provide high-quality educational opportunities that inspire a community of learners. It also committed to three values, the first of which was wellness, and that's we partner with families to prioritize social, emotional wellness, which is necessary for learning and developing resilience. Equity was a second core value that came out of that strategic plan. We ensure all students have equitable access to programs and curricula to reach their potential. And then, finally, the third core value was around engagement. We want to provide engaging educational opportunities where students develop- where students develop passion and joy for learning. Finally, the mission of the district was to develop engaged, well-balanced learners through collaborative, caring relationships. And those are all articulated in that long-range strategic plan. Also, as part of this plan, and again, it's five years, so 2017 to 2022 roughly, we committed to three overarching goals that we're trying to follow through on. The first was to understand and respond to our students' social, emotional needs. The second overarching goal over those five years was our students will have equitable opportunities and tools to learn. And then the third, five-year comprehensive goal, was our students will have access to safe and effective learning environments. The next portion of what I want to do is transition you into how we look at the strategic plan. We have three overarching goals, which should remain relatively consistent from year to year. It doesn't mean that there may not be cause to change something as things change, but that's really the foundation, is staying consistent with those three goals because that's how we know progress is made over a long period of time with consistent application of effort. So I think when you look at this plan, what we're coming to you isn't to really change the main goals of the plan, but instead it's to look at what are the actions, and we call them strategic goal actions, that the district is going to take this year to help us achieve that five-year overarching goal in each of our three categories. So in order to come to you with the strategic goal actions that are in this draft plan, we developed and proposed those various actions through our leadership team, which includes principals and central office administrators. And then what we're doing tonight is coming to you to be able to review those goals, solicit some feedback, and eventually have those three, excuse me, strategic goal actions adopted by the school committee for this current school year. The actions you have before you reflect the historical work and progress that we've made toward the goals since the inception of the Long Range Strategic Plan. If you recall, last June, Bill McCalliffe, along with the Assistant Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, presented a goals update to you, which was a written document and was in the packets, that provided details of the district's progress toward each of these three overarching goals. So some considerations to keep into, hopefully, the forefront of your mind as we talk through this. There were some significant changes that the school committee worked through over the last year-plus. And I use year-plus because some of this was, maybe a year and a half ago, these changes were implemented. But just to highlight some of those, start times, busing, homework, and funding for before and after care. Those are four very, very, very significant changes. One thing we know about change theory is we can't just decide to change something strategically and then not follow up to focus on implementation and monitoring progress because we know that no matter how in-depth you can study something, there are going to be some unintended consequences, and we need continually solicit feedback about what we implement and then make adjustments to practice. So there are several strategic goal actions that you're seeing before you this year, which actually focus on the monitoring and implementation of these initiatives, but they are not necessarily proposing new work for the district. It's really about implementing the work that you started through your work over the last year and a half. So we added a heading into this goal update for this year, which was monitor implementation and adjust practice as needed. And that's really critical. We chose not to put that wording in every single strategic goal action, but instead we use that as a heading, just to make sure everyone understood that when we solicit feedback from people and we collect data around this and present it to you, it's not just so that we can collect more data and say, yes, the data confirms we're doing everything great. What we need to do is be able to collect data, solicit feedback and perceptions about what we're implementing, and then be able to adjust our practice as we move forward. So a couple of questions that come to mind, I think, is how are we going to report on progress to you as a school committee? We have and are in the process of scheduling various school committee presentations on each of the goals and the specific work that we do over the course of the school year. One thing we've talked about doing is that when we do presentations that are specifically tied to goals, we will make sure we highlight which of the goals we're talking about, so it's really clear. You will also hear from me at interim points via the superintendent updates. Sometimes they have, are specifically tied to goals. Other times, it's more general information on what's happening in the district, but you will hear periodically about the goals through that process. And then finally, my goals for my evaluation, which you'll be hearing more about that process at our next meeting, my goals are actually intimately tied to the district's goals. And in fact, three of my goals will be the district's goals. That's expected in the superintendent evaluation process. So you will see more information from me at the mid-year point and then also at the end of the year regarding my own progress toward these goals and supporting these goals. What should you expect to see and hear as the year goes on? You'll hear progress updates, which I mentioned before, but you'll also hear highlights and the analysis of the data that we collect over the course of the year. You might not see every bit of raw data because that's not really what's appropriate for this type of a meeting, but what you will see is we will certainly analyze the data in surveys and questionnaires and, you know, anecdotal and evidence-based data we collect. We will present the highlights of those to you and also talk about how that's impacting our practice as we implement these goals. And then finally, you'll hear from us about how we're adjusting our practice as we go on based on the feedback we've received. So with that said, hopefully, that provides a little bit of a framework about what to expect out of these goals and some history behind how we got where we are. So with that said, I'll turn it over. I didn't put this, I put together the goals on some slides so that as we talk about them, we can all have a same common understanding of what we're talking about, but I don't think I need to go through each one of these for this year during this presentation.
Any questions for Peter? Angie?
Just have a couple of questions. On the first page, it talks about the School Wellness Advisory Committee. Can you kind of elaborate that? Oh. Oh. So on the first page, under the goal number one, there is the School Wellness Advisory Committee. Can you help to elaborate a little bit? What is this committee? You know, what's the roles and responsibility and what makes up the team?
Sure, the School Wellness Advisory Committee. I'll start it off, and then Dawn, if you want to jump in as well, you're more than, you're more than welcome to. The School Wellness Advisory Committee is a committee that's required under one of your policies. I think it's ADF is the wellness policy for the district, which actually, if people are watching at home and they want to learn more, it's in the policy manual. Again, ADF, which is the wellness policy. It actually stipulates the composition of the School Wellness Committee, but it basically composes all of our stakeholders in the district. And the goal is to really monitor our implementation of that policy. So Dawn is actually taking over leading that this year. It's a very exciting group. And Dawn, I don't know if you want to comment a little bit about where you're at with that. She's just getting it off the ground now.
Sure. This group is, as Peter noted, is comprised of a variety of stakeholders. I'll be sending something out to families soon, sort of seeking interest about participation in the committee, so folks can watch for that. We'll also be working with the high school to identify a few student representatives because that's a required membership, and then certainly staff, our nurses, our food services folks, physical education, and some school leaders also. So there is a very specific in the policy. It identifies exactly who needs to be there. The group will meet four times a year, and the goal is to really have them sort of take another look at pieces of the work. If you recall, I think the last time they presented to you was actually prior to my arrival in the spring of 2016, when they presented on sleep and their information about sleep. And so as we look at them noted, like for instance, under goal number one, it would be the hope that we would sort of look again at sleep and sort of, where are we and what are our practices? And are there any things we want to be, you know, working with parents on, those types of things? So more will be unfolding.
Okay, Tessa?
Just a suggestion about wording, where it says, "Work to promote the importance of reading for pleasure at home every night and device-free time." I think it would be nice if there were something that sort of expanded upon the idea of reading because there are many children that read through devices rather than a print book. You know, they listen to audiobooks or they read along, and that sort of looks very cut and dry, reading and no devices. And I just think it would be nice if there was maybe explicit recognition that there are, that there is more than one way to read.
Paul? Oh. You have another question, Angie?
Yeah. So two more clarification, which is, there is a sentence on the first page as well. Is consider homework through an equity lens? Can you kind of elaborate that? And also, the solicit data from stakeholder, which, and who makes up the stakeholders? Is the student part of the stakeholder? Or how often the principal will gather the data about the homework? And also, well, I think you covered in the previous page. So I think the principal, if my understanding is correct, the principal will make some adjustment based on the data that's collected. So I want to clarify that whether, and they will report to the school committee on the adjustment they make based on the data they received. I just want to clarify that, whether that's a progress.
Yeah, so I think, just going back one slide, one thing you should be hearing from us is how we adjust our practice based on the data. We chose not to write that every single time because by putting it in a header, we just wanted to make sure it was implied throughout. But yes, you will absolutely be hearing as the year goes on about how we're adjusting practice based on the feedback we get. I want to come back to, and I think there were three questions in there, so I want to make sure I'm trying to get to all of them. The first one was around considering equity or have an equity lens to the homework work. Deb and Dawn, I don't know if you want to talk to this?
So in the policy, the fourth paragraph down speaks to ensuring that all students have equitable access to programs and curricula. So specifically around the homework piece, any information or directions that they're clear for students so they can access the information and the homework to be able to complete it. And the end result is so that they can complete it independently. Also, making sure that students have the available resources to complete the homework, making sure that those materials are readily available in the home so that all students start from the same place and have access to those materials.
And then can you repeat the third question, the one that was sandwiched in the middle? I think I might have missed that.
Yes, stakeholder.
What, who, how would we define stakeholders? Stakeholders for us are our students, our families, our faculty, and our administrators.
Paul?
So I breathed a sigh of relief when I saw you say, "We're going to focus on implementation and no new initiatives." And I think that that's great because I think we've been maybe drinking a little from the fire hose in the past couple of days, a couple of years with all the different initiatives that, and they're good and I think things that need to be done. It's just that it's a lot, we took on a lot. And I, it's kind of a relief to hear that, okay, those changes are under our belt, and now we're just going to focus on implementing them. And that makes me feel like we're going to be establishing a new normal and kind of get used to that normal. So thank you.
Sure, and I also want to make sure I don't give the impression there's no new work happening. There certainly is new work across the district. But I think the focus of this plan is to make sure that the work that was implemented is implemented thoughtfully and has the impact that we intended it to have. I think sometimes if you don't take the time to monitor progress around implementation, you end up with a disconnect between your intended impact and the real impact. And I actually think, I saw a great slide last spring on our CPAC presentation where they showed kind of the broken swing diagram. And it was something about, you know, this is what we thought we wanted. Here's what actually got built, and then here's what the resulting impact was. And it was a great slide, and I think of that, that we need to consider that type of a process every time we implement something new.
Adam?
First of all, I want to commend the fact that we're re-highlighting both here but also in all the presentations that relate to our goals, that, you know, that we've got this. And thank you for having the poster up, a poster. And we have that mission, we have our values, we have, we have that stuff present. And I really appreciate the fact that we're going to, as we move through the year, make sure that we sort of remind ourselves as these presentations come in, how they apply to our values. I really just have sort of a formatting question as I'm looking through these goals. And I, I'm confused about that header that says the previous strategic actions. Is that saying that the items below that header are those items that are previous actions that we're then monitoring? And then, so for goal number one, everything below that is previous actions. And if we look at goal number two as an example, there are items above that which are sort of new strategic actions for this year? So I guess I'm looking for sort of clarity on that formatting. And then also, as I tried to go back, it looks like some of these, for goal number one, some of these strategic actions that we've written here, the language doesn't necessarily, at least in the report that we got out on the July 16 meeting, the language doesn't necessarily line up. So I'm just confused a little bit about, you know, what's previous stuff that we're monitoring? And is the language consistent from the previous goals? And then what's the new strategic actions for this year?
Sure. Let me talk a little bit about kind of the overview. I'm going to post slide two because I think this, I think the second goal highlights this a little better for anyone who's also trying to follow along. So I don't necessarily think of these as necessarily new initiatives, even though they're new goal actions, because these are all outgrowths of the work that the district's been doing for the last few years. So for example, through the work of the Data Inquiry Team that started its work last year, which is a district-wide team, we talked a little bit about that. We, and our leadership team, one of the things that came out as we started to look at our district's data is we felt very strongly that we needed to increase the diversity of our workforce. And so what we wanted to do was write a goal action around that. And that is, could look new, but it's really the result of previous work that took place. So just to help connect that a little bit, building educator capacity to teach all students is also something. If you look at the evidence and measures for that one, the evidence and measures there flows right out of previous work that was done. But as we discussed that as a leadership team, what we realized is both of the evidence and measures there were really part of a broader strategic goal action of making sure that our educators had the capacity to teach all students. So we did change the wording around that a little bit. And so this is why goal actions may not have the exact same verbiage as what you saw previously because the goal actions are intended to grow over time as opposed to be something that's static, whereas the overarching goals are something that we want to keep relatively static unless there's some major shift or major revision that we feel is necessary mid-cycle. Monitoring strategic actions, excuse me, from previous years, this is some information that is, again, that is, again, it's very similar to language that may have been used, but we also may have had some feedback along the way that said, "We need to better target something very specific." So, it's not going to be a perfect alignment, but it should, if you look at our strategic plans over time, you should be able to see work in the three-goal areas grow. And I'll also maybe see if either Marie, Dawn, or Deb wants to expand on that a little bit, if I didn't articulate that well. Which is very likely impossible, I will say that. Did that answer your question in that area?
Yeah, thank you.
Or if there was specific feedback too, I'm happy to hear that, if there was something that didn't feel like it was aligned?
It makes sense. I, it's just sort of that, that bold heading there that says, "Previous Strategic Actions." I think, maybe the language, "Previous Strategic Actions," isn't the right language, because it implies a before and after state, and clearly, it's an ongoing state. So I feel like maybe that idea around monitoring the implementation and adjusting as needed applies to all of the action goals, and doesn't necessarily bifurcate the goal heading.
Maybe to put in something around the heading that these are previous strategic actions that we're just monitoring, as opposed, the other ones are the implementation, so maybe separating out implementing and the monitoring, that both are adjusting as needed. So, yeah.
Tessa. So, on this slide, where it says, "Through an equity lens, review existing practices in each building around family contributions." I was, I was happy to see that, but then I read the, the evidence and measures, and felt it was a little limited in saying, "Suggests and requires school supplies and annual field trips." Through our own unfortunate experience this year, it has come to light that there is a lot of inequity in the differences between the rolling out of the band strings program at the different schools. And additionally, it can't be ignored, how the PTOs contribute differently to the different schools. So, I just hope that those things, not that they, everything has to be looked at all at once, but as we're looking through an equity lens, I think there are things beyond school supplies and field trips that families are being asked to contribute at different schools, and I just hope that that's considered.
I think that's a great point, and I think that's something that our leadership team has discussed openly. I think, you know, the leadership team is probably, has their hands tied a little bit, because they have this new person who came on board as their superintendent. And I think they're probably limited in what they can take on in scope, in year one of a new superintendent. And I think there's a high recognition that equity needs to be looked at across all aspects of what we do over a long period of time. And we do understand that PTO funding varies wildly from school to school. And, but I think, from a, what can we really look at this year and feel like we can wrap our arms around and be effective in moving something forward? We felt like really looking at family contributions to some of these areas was the way to go. And yes, we're very well aware of the, some of the music inequities and how that looks in different communities, and we're looking at that as well. It may not rise to a goal of the district, but we know that, that we certainly need to keep paying attention to all of our programs. Anything else on, on that? Marie?
We're sort of debating over here. In general, we want to look at the impact of extracurricular programs as well on economically disadvantaged families. So, it is a bit broader than supplies and field trips. We put in the goal, "Supplies and Field Trips," but we're looking at sort of all of those kinds of things. We've already put some things in place at the beginning of this year, and we're continuing to work our way through it. So, I think we don't necessarily want to expand the list too broadly, because we don't want it to imply things that we necessarily can't tackle in this year. Even field trips, people define field trips differently. Some might say that the service trip to Ecuador is a field trip, and there should be equitable opportunity. So, we're trying to, we hear you, I guess, is the answer. And it's part of what we're looking at, and we're definitely looking at exactly what you're talking about. We're just trying to figure out how far we can move the dial in a year.
That's totally fine, I appreciate that. The band program is not extracurricular, what I'm talking about.
Yep, I wasn't.
Okay, no, I just, okay, yeah, I hear you.
Curricular and extracurricular, we're looking at.
Okay, we'll take one more from Angie.
So, I understand then, this year, the focus is on the implementation, which, under the social wellness, social emotional goal here, that we're more focused on the, review the homework policy data, as well as the, the other one is the, the school time start change, the impact for that. But the overall, the ultimate goal is the student wellness. So, I was struck, you mentioned earlier that there is going to be student forum, and are we going to engage and collect some data from the kind of overall student, and how kind of overall, because ultimately, we want to reach the wellness for the, for the, each of the student. And is there like a survey data, kind of overall, how, how this policy or changes impact their overall wellness? And kind of, you know, how frequent we want to look at, because that's ultimately, we're looking at the overall wellness of the student, and how each of the, because there's quite a lot of different initiation that's going on in the school, and how which, how each the result is coming, is ultimately, is result, is the wellness of the student. So, do we have some data collected on that area?
So I think, you know, concurrent with the work the district is doing, in trying to monitor progress around some of the specific initiatives we've had, I have an entry plan process that's taking place as well, in which I am hosting these student forums at each school, and speaking with families, speaking with students, speaking with faculty and administration. And one of the outcomes of that is for me to be able to come back to you in either late December, or it might be early January, depending on how we can schedule all of these forums, and be able to give you what's called a report of entry findings, in which I'll actually be able to synthesize for you and for the community, what I've heard across stakeholder groups, and what I think that means for our school district moving forward. And that will inform the next step in revision and growth of this strategic plan. So, that's certainly something we'll be talking about. But it's also not just focused on wellness, it's really focused on, how are our students experiencing school, and what do they think they need, in order to continue to move our schools forward? So that I can ask those broad questions, because if for them wellness comes to the top, then that's a critical issue. If something else comes to the top, that may be a critical issue that's, that's different for students. So I don't want to quite jump to conclusions on what comes out of that yet.
Thank you.
Marie?
But also, we have several surveys going on related to student wellness, that are student surveys. So the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is every other year, those results are coming out. And the Challenge Success Survey, both of those are totally focused on student wellness. Challenge Success, we're going to do again this spring, and we're going to be able to compare it back to three years ago. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey is every other year. Then we do the senior survey at the high school, and we will be surveying all students to get feedback around start times, sleep, schedule, homework, and wellness. So, if anything, we've gotten criticized for over-surveying, but there are lots of wellness data points directly from students and others from families that we gather, and we continue to gather.
Paul?
Just to add to that, I know, one year, a few years ago, we had the, the student youth risk survey, and the United Way survey came out in the same year, and they were, the United Way survey is a broader reach, but it was coming to some similar conclusions as the youth risk survey. So I don't know if the United Way is going to be doing the same thing?
That was the Community Needs Assessment, which was a very broad community, and a very in-depth analysis of the needs of the community. I think that's like an every-ten-year thing. But the data's all posted on abuw.org, and it's, it's very valuable data to take a look at.
I have a question that might be more of a housekeeping question on goal three, which has to do with the MSBA project underway. So, when I read that, I, I felt like it was really filled with some jargon, and I'm wondering if we could at least put some links in to help the public and school committee members, that matter, understand what these things are. So, the two pieces are educational vision and educational program, and the other feasibility study versus an existing condition study. So I wondered if you had any thoughts on trying to, you know, it would be too much to try to explain something within the goals, but at least provide, provide some links, or something of that nature.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look at providing links. You know, we don't, haven't traditionally, I don't think, put links right into this document, but we would certainly have them on the website, but we can, we can take a look at what that, that might mean. I don't know if there's an opportunity. I did receive some other comments, you know, through various emails and questions, and I thought it actually valuable to just make sure I shared these comments with the committee, because I think in the spirit of open meeting, that's a really important function. So, I just wanted to, if it's all right, come back through a few things. One comment I received just said, "In noting the timeline in which the funding is scheduled, and this is building project-related," there was some recollection of that the district's debt service will be coming off the books, and dropping dramatically as we approach 2022, and that we should just be emphasizing that with our community when we do talk about funding the building project. Another comment I received was just adding that the existing, you know, we reference an existing conditions study in the goals for the year. Someone suggested that making sure we emphasize that that's a required component of the MSBA process. I think there could be some confusion in the community with the Doran-Wittier existing conditions study that we did, and people wondering why we're doing two existing conditions studies to get a project going. The Doran-Wittier study was very, very broad in scope, and was intended to look at all of the district's facilities, and develop a comprehensive list of what needed to be upgraded. The purpose of this existing conditions report, we've now determined that we're looking at the CT Douglas School, and possibly the Gates and or Conant Schools. Now we need to study in much more depth, the existing conditions around those two sites, to determine the suitability of building a building on those specific sites. So there is a little bit of difference there. And then, the third piece was really something that I think Angie had talked about even just a couple minutes ago, but really just making sure that we look at the broad picture of student wellness, and not get too focused on maybe some of the work that's been implemented. So, I wanted to highlight that as well, just to make sure everyone who's paying attention got the same information.
I just want to echo Paul's comments, that we, we had a lot of initiatives roll out fast, and I feel really good about this phase of implementation, where we can really start to see the fruits of all that labor.
Seeing no other questions, I'm going, oops, seeing no other questions, I'm going to move to item nine, subcommittee reports. Mary, you're up for the building committee?
Okay, so the building committee is in a height of activity. Arrow Street and Skanska are working hard with the district and the school building committee to do a lot of work over the next few months. So we are working on the existing conditions report that was mentioned. They've been in the three elementary schools. Just to clarify, so, in order to follow the process that we have with MSBA, and following the request for proposals that we put out, they will study all three schools. Even if, you know, our preferred solution is Douglas-Gates, we're still going to study Conant, so that if Douglas-Gates doesn't work out, we know the feasibility of moving to the Conant site. So they're in all three schools, they used actually both of our recent holidays to get in there and have full access without disrupting any classrooms. They're also working with the district, Marie and her team, planning the educational visioning sessions. You've all been invited to attend at least one of those, as well as the wrap-up. That's going to happen quite quickly. In your packet, there was a memo, an agenda. We had a meeting with MSBA, and it was a kickoff meeting, for them to really communicate to us their expectations. It was a great meeting, and it really laid out some of the things we have. And the two things I want to point out to you are, we have products due to them fairly soon. One is called the educational, well, one is called, let's see, the preliminary design program, and that is going to be a lot of information that feeds into our eventual design. It's preliminary because it's early information, they'll give us feedback, we'll continue to add information, and it'll get revised. A key component of the preliminary design program is the educational program. So the district is going to put together an educational program, and that's going to take information from the work we did with Doran-Wittier, information from the visioning sessions that are going to happen, and information from the district into this educational program. That's the program that we ideally want to have with our students over a broad, a long-term view. And that is then going to drive the design. So this is a critical piece to put together. As a school committee, we need to approve that. And so, we're going to have opportunities on October 18th, we'll get it in our packet, we'll have an opportunity to review it, ask questions, give feedback, and then on November 1st, we're going to vote it. We really need to vote it on November 1st, because it's due to MSBA on November 7th. If we miss that date, it bumps us out two months. And two months in this process, a building process, is a lot of money and time. And so, we want to do our best to make that date. So, the educational program is approved by the school committee. That then goes into a larger report, which is this preliminary design program, and that gets approved by the school building committee. So, following our vote here on the educational plan, it'll get pieced in, and the school building committee will approve the preliminary design program by November 7th, so we can submit it to MSBA. Subsequent to that, we will then be working toward a plan called the Preferred Schematic Report. And that is our preferred preliminary schematic information. So, and it's going to take information from all of the things we're collecting, the building conditions, the site feasibility, the educational plan, and we're going to start to drive toward, what do we really want? And start making decisions about sites, and buildings, and configurations, things like that. And that needs to go to MSBA by January 2nd. So we're on some pretty tight timeframes. I want to mention that our website has a lot of information. If you go to the website, there, at the top, there's a bold for district. Under district, it's superintendent's page, and you'll see the building project. And there's information there. Although, anything that Doran-Wittier did as the master planning is not under building project, it's under capital plan, because that was part of our capital plan effort. So there's, sometimes, depending on what you're looking for, it's on one of the two pages. I'd also like to offer, particularly to new school committee members, but whoever else wants to join in, kind of a building project 101. If anyone wants to come, and I'll do a workshop on what's gone on already, so that you can hit the ground running when you get the packet for the October 18th meeting. So I'm going to ask that anyone who wants to take advantage of that, please let me know by Monday, and then for all those who are interested, we'll find a common time to get together. The last thing I'll mention is, we've included timeline information in your packet, but this is updated all the time. And so that's why I point you to the website, because when Skanska and Arrow Street give us new materials, we post it there. So, if you're remembering, "Oh, I had a timeline," probably the best thing to do, instead of going back three or four packets, is to go to the website and see what the latest timeline is saying. I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Adam?
I just want to add one comment, that we clarified at the meeting, which is that all of the work that we've done prior to this, around visioning and existing conditions through the capital planning process with Doran-Wittier, all of that has been delivered to both Arrow Street and Skanska, and what they've told us is that, that all of that effort is being used to help move us forward. So even though by the requirements of MSBA, we have to, we have to do some of this work again, all of the work that we've done in advance helps move us along much quicker and more efficiently.
Thank you.
So that work hasn't gone to waste.
That's a great point, yep.
Paul, you were next.
Thank you, Mary. So for the preliminary schematic, you said there was a due date of January 2nd? Does that, is that a vote that we have to take before then?
So, you know what, I didn't bring my feasibility packet with me. I'm not sure what votes we need to take versus the school building committee. We will let you know in plenty of time, but I, I don't know which is which.
And the reason why I bring that up, I mean, January 2nd, I mean, that's, that's...
Yeah, well, we would do it in December.
Right, well, that's where I'm, that's where I'm getting at. We'd have to be acting in December.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Wondering if there's a graphic or something we could produce, that just has a timeline for school committee votes, for the act and box for town meeting votes that will be required, perhaps a ballot, so that we could kind of see if it's all on there?
Well, this has most of that. I don't know if we have school committee votes on here, but I don't know... I don't know if we have school committee votes on here, but I don't know. It has the school building committee votes. It has the, I mean, it has our hope for town meeting. So, the way that, what happens is MS, there's, if you go down one, two, three, four rows, in the middle, there's a big green box. MSBA Acceptance of Proposed Project, Project Scope and Budget Agreement. That's August 29th, 2019. Then, from that point, we get 120 days to get town meeting approval from the two towns. And just so it's in everybody's head, it's a town meeting and a ballot vote because it's going to be a override, right? It's because we're going to bond a huge project. So, it's both towns have to have town meeting and a vote that needs to happen within that 120-day timeframe. So, that plays out, we're thinking a November-ish town meeting, special town meeting.
So, down on the bottom, just below that two rows, is the preliminary construction schedule that gives a window of August 24th, 2020 to June 27th, '22. Is that just kind of, it could begin as early as August 24th, 2020? Or it could end as late as, is it that kind of window? Or is that the, is that the construction window?
See the difference between, it's going to start around August of 2020 if we get all the necessary approvals and it will end around June of 2022. The building, the construction will, the building will be built around 2022.
Okay, it's a two-year, two-year thing, okay.
Yeah.
For the educational program, is that, who, for the educational program? So, who puts that together? Is that collected, you said, you mentioned something that's produced with our students? Can you just further clarify that?
So, the district puts that document together. It comes from many materials. So, we did a three-day visioning with Doran Whittier. Doran Whittier did sessions with principals and other stakeholder meetings. That will be included in there. We're doing additional visioning now with Arrow Street and Frank Locker, who's their consultant, focused on each of the schools and that will go in there. But then, other materials that are across the district, it requires input on special education. So, that will be Dawn and her team. And I imagine there'll be some input from the CPAC. There needs to be information on, what else was I going to say? On the, like, our vision, mission, values, all of that will be in there. So, it's, and some policies and things like that. It all kind of gets rolled into that. And the district puts it together with support from Arrow Street, who, you know, they've done this, they're experts at this.
Okay, thank you, Mary, for all your hard work on this.
And I'll just say, given that, when you get the plan, the goal is not like a wordsmithing edit of it because many stakeholders are reflecting on this. The goal is that, do you, do you support this as the concept that's going to drive the building project, the specifications and all of that? So, just to be clear, because it is, I know we're asking a lot from you in a short timeframe, so just to kind of help focus.
Thank you for that context. Item 9.2 and 9.3, the Budget and Policy Committee Updates, so.
Okay, so, budget, budget met on this past Monday. We reviewed the 2018 budget wrap-up and we discussed the Capital Planning Subcommittee, including hiring Skanska and the makeup of the committee, including FinCom and so forth. And our next meeting for Budget is on October the 2nd. Policy, are there questions about Budget? So, Policy is actually going to have their first meeting on October the 3rd. And I'll just, I'll let you know after that how it went.
Item 9.4, we're looking for a possible vote tonight on our school committee protocols. You received an addendum with the updated protocols. So, and there's a hard, oh, okay, then, okay. You also received a hard copy at your seat. So, I'm looking for a motion.
Move to approve, second?
Discussion? Everyone like, they see? Outstanding. Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, item 9.5 is new Subcommittee Appointments. There was a memo that I sent to you and that is also included in your packet asking for interested, people interested in a calendar survey Subcommittee, a capital improvement Subcommittee, and a negotiation Subcommittee to send me a statement of interest. Thank you so much for volunteering for these roles. I'm going to make the appointments now. So, the calendar survey committee will be Eileen, Maya, and Tessa. The capital improvement committee will be Adam, Paul, and myself. Negotiations will be Paul, Amy, and Tessa. Again, I really appreciate everybody submitting their statements of interest. It's, it's good work, a lot of work, and necessary work and rewarding work, so, thank you.
I'm sorry, Diane, could you just read that out one more time?
The appointees?
Yeah.
Sure, so, the calendar, Eileen, Maya, Tessa. Capital Improvement, Adam, Paul, Diane. Negotiations, Paul, Amy, Tessa.
Do we need to vote this because we vote all the other ones?
So, I'm thinking we probably do need to vote this, yes?
So, I'll move to approve the appointments as stated by Diane.
All in favor? Any opposed, abstentions? Motion passes. Item 10, the School Committee Reports. Not a lot going on yet. I think we're still getting, getting some meetings, meeting dates together. I know the PTSOs are meeting October 1st. Tessa, did you have something?
I was just going to say that the Boxborough Selectment met and decided that the ballot vote on the ban of retail marijuana sales will coincide with our town election, which is Tuesday, May 21st.
Angie? Yeah, so, I know you attended the Act and Board of Selectment meeting?
So, because of the tragic incident that of our student, that there's a meeting on the agenda for the Monday Board of Selectment meeting. And they received, the reason we, they put the agenda there because they got a lot of calls. And the Board of Selectmen, the police chief and the town manager and the public works director had a meeting about the sidewalk and the pedestrian safety. So, they, in the Monday meeting, they talk about, they're trying, because there's a lot of focus and attention from the community right now on the pedestrian safety right now. So, they're trying to gather some energy from the, from the town and to see where they can move to the next one, which there is, they're talking about, right now, the first committee they're looking at is the Sidewalk Committee. So, Peter is the chair of the committee. And in the meeting, he talks about the kind of, the funding of the Sidewalk Committee and how that, the process of the funding and how each sidewalk is decided and the challenge they're facing right now. And he also talks about the, right now, they only have three members on the Sidewalk Committee and they're actively looking for volunteers. And also, the, so, he pointed out that right now, it's the town that they need to look at the overall, where the kind of, the challenge in different areas of the town than has the pedestrians. So, they are looking at, kind of, they bring this issue again and so they are actively looking at, but at the same time, they are looking at, they are letting the community aware of the challenge they're facing right now. And they are looking, I think there was a discussion this morning, a meeting this morning with a lot of residents and the town manager. And they were talking about some kind of a public hearing on this issue. But that's, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't involved in that. So, that's kind of the discussion.
Okay, thank you very much. It's very helpful information, it's important work. Beth? Okay.
Diane? Would you mind if I talk about, just FinCom met? So, FinCom met, not a lot to discuss, but the new town manager, John Magia.
Ready?
Don, yeah, Magia. He, he came and spoke for quite a while. And they were just wrapping up their point of view and they will be sharing their point of view with us at some later date, sometime near, near in the future.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just going to draw your attention to the FYI section. October 3rd, Building Resilience at Gallery Works, it's from 6:30 to 8:30 is happening. And also, October 3rd at 7, meet the Boxborough new town administrator and the superintendent of schools in, I think it's at the library, right, in Boxborough? Yep, that's coming up as well. Okay, so, I hear a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you and good night.